I would like to have a full council. And I would really like to have six people instead of four. So if I get my way, that there will be two more vacancies down the road. So I would like to get this vacancy taken care of tonight if I could. I have one from Jerry Modder Jr., in which I think Jerry would be a very, very good individual. But I think Jerry went by helicopter to Bronson or Burgess Hospital last night. That he had a massive heart attack, I think. So I'm with Bronson. Because he had Bronson. So I don't think Jerry would be interested at this point in time, or probably not down the road for a while either. And I certainly wish the best for Jerry. To the Village of Marcellus, I, April Easton, would like to put my name in for a Marcellus Village trustee position. I have been a trustee before for Marcellus from 2005 to 2008. And at that time, I learned lots to go to running, I learned a lot that goes into running the village, and I would like to be part of it again. Here is a little about me. I'm a Marcellus grad from the class of '94. After graduation, I went to SMC and grad there, 2002, with my certificate. Excuse me. I have been living in the village for 13-plus years. For that, I live out in the town. Before that, I lived out in the township and have three children, two boys at age seven and five, and one little girl, age three. I want to help make the village a place where families want to come and stay and help the village grow. Thank you for reading it, and I hope to hear from you soon. April Easton. I've got one from Mr. James Thompson, Jim Thompson Sr. I am, Mr. Welborn, I am interested in putting my name in for the vacancy on the village council for the Village of Marcellus. Thank you, Jim Thompson Sr. Jim has been on the fire department for 35 years. A chief, total of eight years. Jim was fire chief when I was on the Mesa Board, and that's back when the Mesa Board was started. Officer on the fire department, 12 and a half years. Lived in the village since 1967. Retired eight years ago from regular job. He has been helping at the fire department for eight years. I don't think a day's went by that Jim hasn't been down here at Village Hall, helping one way or another. Jim will not be running for chief at the next election in November, and Jim has been finishing out John Bates's term as chief. Ann has worked with Jim with the Mesa Board, and I, do you have any recommendations for Jim, or what's your thoughts?
He has done an excellent job, taking over the leadership of the fire department, and has been encouraged, and they have gotten several new applicants to go on the fire I just hate to see leave this right now. I'm hoping that this is not a conflict of interest.
Jim, I think, aren't you, November, when you have your elections for the fire department?
It's gonna be March. March 30th is my last day as fire chief.
Well, I don't, I don't see it as a conflict of interest. We have a manager that's certain-
Oh, I didn't say that I saw. I said, is it, I wondered if it was a conflict of interest.
I've had, there has been fire chiefs that have served on the council before. I think Larry Keen was one of them. Jim?
Ron, I look at it this way, when I'm, if I'm on the council, at a meeting, it'd be council. Anything I would have to do on a day-to-day basis, if it was something I had to go and do as far as any kind of work for the council or anything, it would be council work. If it's fire department, time, I'll be over there, I'll be doing fire department work. Of course, everybody knows I assist Bobby on the AMs because at one time it was really short on the AMs. I like to get out of it, as far as the AMs goes, but when the tone's dropping, you hear a priority call come in, it's awful hard to go and stay at home. Just thank God that the last call to come in was Monday night, and we was able to use our new Lucas device that Mr. Wilson had purchased, and that was a lifesaver. Bob and I talked about that today, and he was, he doesn't want to say it's a win-win situation for him and the crew that night, because Jerry not out of the woods yet, and I told him, I says, "Bobby, I says, "As far as I'm concerned, you and your crew did what you could do, you used your new Lucas device, and when the care went from the AMs crew or to the chopper crew, they took him off the calms, so your job was done. You done all you could do." But no, if I, I would do fire and AMs work over there, but when the time comes, be over here, it'd be council, and there would not be me mixing one with the other. It just would not happen.
I think legally, was you thinking more of a conflict of interest than what you was personally, or, yeah, so, but I don't, I don't think there is a conflict. I would like to appoint Dennis Irwin as my president pro temp. That Dennis was elected in November, and I can tell you Dennis has absolutely worked his tail off on this council. And so I would like to make a motion to have Dennis Irwin as my president pro temp. Do I have a second to that?
The seating of the president pro temp was done by appointment of the president. You made the appointment.
Okay.
I moved that the president's appointment of Dennis Irwin to serve as the president pro temp during his term of office. They ratified and approved.
Support.
We gotta vote now? Is that what, same roll call? Vote?
Welborn?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Irwin?
Abstain.
Discuss fill vacancy on the council. Mr. Webb wrote a letter here that I'll read to you. Dear Mr. Welborn, a prose of the agenda, is that right? Did I pronounce that right? A prose?
Apper prose.
Ap- a prose?
A little Greek, I think.
I've never seen that word. Well, never recognized it before, anyway. The agenda posted for the Wednesday, September 30th, 2015, special meeting of the Marcellus Village Council, I, MBC. I have no objection to your wishing to appoint a new village president pro temp quickly to succeed Marcellus Village Trustee Michael J. Low, who died on September 23rd, 2015. However, I do take exception to electing someone at the evening village council meeting to fill the village council seat, Marcellus Village trustee position left vacant due to Mr. Ludlow's death for the following reasons. For decades, the MBC has followed, observed the policy, custom, and practice of posting and advertising in local news media notice of vacancies, MBC and the village government agencies, boards, commissions, and committees, therein inviting those eligible and interested to apply or submit letters of interest and resume listing their backgrounds, relevant experience, and skills by date and time certain for consideration by the MBC prior to the election or appointed by the MBC. Number two, no such posting or notice has been given in this case contrary to the village's longstanding policy, custom, and practice. While acknowledge that one or more persons have expressed their interest earlier in writing to fill Mr. Ludlow's seat since his death, I oppose filling that vacancy until the Village of Marcellus has posted and advertised such a notice and allowed a reasonable period of length of time, and those eligible and interested to apply to submit a letter of interest. Sincerely yours, Burke H. Webb. P.S. I had written an earlier version of an above email at my Juno account this morning, but Juno malfunction deleted it before I could send it. Hence my use of AOL account, VHW. I have three parties interested in filling Mr. Ludlow's seat. We have had four members for seven months, give and take, two or three meetings. I really-
I'd like to make a motion if it's possible, please. I'd like to make a motion to advertise in the Marcellus News and on the marcellusmichigan.org for a village citizen who would be interested to assume the position of village trustee to fill the vacancy of Mike Ludlow. His term runs to November of 2016. The interested person should provide a letter of interest and intent to the village clerk's office no later than Monday, October the 12th, at 4:00 p.m. I feel that this is, we have used the same process and policy for many, many years. I feel at this time, we really need to continue to follow the same policy. It's only going to be two weeks before we have another meeting. By that time, we would have anybody else that would be interested. We've still got a couple of letters. I don't think two weeks more is going to make that much difference. I just really would like to see us follow our policy that we've held, we've did for many, many years.
I really would like to take care of tonight. Okay. Motion seconded.
I think that-
Roll call, vote?
Let me just note that Mrs. Simmons is quite right. We may or may not receive other applications for any interest, but it is well to go through the process in a public way, and by posting and advertising in the local news media, we will take the step that we normally do. There certainly is a certain amount of interest, despite by the number of people in the audience this evening, and I have no interest in frustrating the process, but that we observe the manners and the policies that we long observed. This isn't a, we're not confronting an emergency situation. It is a time of stress perhaps for some, but I think the village people would be best served by publicizing the vacancy and inviting whomever may wish to comply.
And also, another thought would be, you ask, you want to have a total of seven or six, including yourself, on board? And you, no, at this point in time, you've only got two, not counting Jerry. If we published it, maybe we would get more so that we could just appoint everybody at the same time and have a full board by the next meeting.
If you remember, at the last meeting, that motion was turned down to go from, to six trustees.
We're doing further review, because we have to find out how first.
Yeah.
I think the upshot was that the clerk manager would prepare a fresh ordinance that would amend the one now on the books to present at the next meeting, and we can consider that. It was not really, regardless of the language of the motion that was voted on, it doesn't preclude the offering of a fresh ordinance on the subject. I think the only issue may be whether an expansion of the village council from five to seven should take place currently or with the November 16 election. I think that's, at least as I recall the discussion, that that seemed to me to be the only particular issue. I think the president's ready to call a vote on this particular motion.
Roll call.
Welborn?
Yes.
Webb?
Oh, called me, yes.
Yes.
Simmons?
What are we voting on?
We're voting on advertising to fill the position.
Okay. Yes, please.
And Irwin?
Yes.
I'm so for it.
Mr. Webb, I think you just pulled a fast one. I mean, I think you just pulled a fast one.
No.
No, Ron, I don't think you did. I think, I think everybody in this audience feels the same way. We really need to follow our procedures. We've gotten off track a little bit, and-
You people, your procedures have not been liked by the community.
Then let's change them so they learn. And this would be one way to do it.
That's a rather indistinct statement, but in any event, if we have finished the business of the meeting, it is a special meeting. I move that the meeting be adjourned.
Support.
Oh. Oh, gosh.
You didn't ask for public comments.
Yeah, we have public comment.
How could I have a chance I asked for public comment?
You didn't have anything to, Ron, I mean, Ron, you didn't really go in the agenda for public comment.
I didn't make the agenda up to start with.
In any event, it is a, it is a special-
Your manager made the agenda up, Ann.
Quite a personal privilege. This is a special meeting. The agenda is set beforehand, and having dealt with the matter of the last matter before adjournment of filling a vacancy on the village council, the only other business that properly comes before the meeting is adjournment, and that's why I made the motion.
I didn't ask for that public comment, that public comment at the top either. But it was added there.
We always do. That's part of our agenda.
We always do at the bottom, too.
I know, but it isn't on here tonight, so that's- You were afraid to let us speak, and we know that.
Oh, no.
Yes, you are. Don't even say that, Ann.
Quite a personal privilege. I believe that this meeting should be in order. We can, we can follow the rules of courtesy and manners. I am simply asking for the rules to be observed. We all are bound by them, and there's no reason not to apply rules of courtesy. I am willing to meet anyone on any battlefield, civilian or not. I do not live in fear of any of you or anyone else, and I think-
There's a motion to adjourn.
It should be adjourned, yeah.
Roll call. No.
Webb?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Irwin?
No. I think we need to have public comments.
Then, to follow proper rules of procedure, I move that the agenda for this meeting, with unanimous consent and vote, second on the motion and vote, be amended to provide, as a new item seven, the adjournment will be eight, to allow for public comment not exceed two occasions.
I second that.
I'm simply asking that you follow the rules.
That's wonderful. I think it's a great idea.
Roll call.
Everybody agrees. Webb?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Welborn?
Yes. Brian? I personally think, regardless of what you just motioned and voted for, you know, this is my personal opinion. I think you guys should expand this to seven.
Pardon?
You should expand this board to seven as fast as possible, because what's happening is nothing. Do you understand that? And the general public sees that nothing productive is coming out of this board right now. On, on the streets, and in the coffee shops, and in the hardware stores, and everything, it's counterintuitive to do this. I think you guys should fill that seat tonight, you know, get some business going, at least get the wheels turning, fill the other two seats, you know, in your November election or whatever. But you can't keep punting the ball, you know, on fourth down all the time. You gotta make a decision, and you guys have been punting the ball a lot. I'm just saying in general, okay?
About everything, or about-
Just nothing is getting done. Okay? So these meetings are meant to come here, get stuff done, work as a community, do what's best for the community, you know, and move Marcellus forward.
Absolutely. I wholeheartedly agree with you.
So, I mean, figure it out and get it done. I mean, literally, appoint that guy tonight, and put your ad in the paper, you know, let's get something done instead of constantly putting the ball. It's frustrating. So that's all I have to say.
Anybody else? Kate?
I'm not sure if they're aware that there is a petition that's on hold to recall the board members because of the lack of business being done, and I'm sure Mr. Webb was sick at the last meeting, that he couldn't make it, so there could be some decisions made. But there's a lot of signatures on this petition that's waiting to be turned in, but they've held it off.
I don't think you should. I don't really think you should.
They should, okay.
Just, let me suggest this. I will respond later as to whether anything is being done by the village administration or the village council. And regardless of your impression, a whole lot is being done, but continue, please.
Excuse me?
I've been recalled from this village council before.
I know.
And, and-
Why were you, why haven't you been homing it up? If, if because they were hoping-
Appointed and elected and reelected and defeated and elected again.
I think they thought things were going to be accomplished, and after-
I don't care. You, you may proceed with-
Mr. Welborn got in, and it didn't happen, but they have it. I have it, I have nothing to do with it, I don't live here, but it is in safekeeping. So-
So then do it.
They were hoping that people would get to rally behind the president.
Now, you must proceed quickly, because if you wait until after roughly November 20, 2015, there is provision in the state law that precludes recalling a, an elected official within the last year of office, so I am-
Yes, I'm aware of that.
My job, my job is to be a professional, and I'm just telling you what the rule is, and so have at it, but follow the rules.
Joyce?
Burke, of all the people in this town, you should not want another recall. You, of all people, you have been recalled. You know what a recall can do to our community.
I don't control whether there will be a recall. I am simply telling you what the timeframe is-
You could control how you vote on this council.
So that if people are frustrated, they shouldn't be frustrated by delaying the process.
Well, they're just frustrated with you, is the big problem. You keep coming back with all these great things, Anne is a Marcellus girl. I'm a Marcellus girl, and I would love to see Marcellus grow. But you can't grow when you're always trying to manipulate everything that is going on in this council. You can't do that, Burke. You've got to stop. And I hear you tonight, and I've heard you for years and years and years doing this. I've heard it since you came to town. You've got to stop and realize that the people here, that have been here for years and years and years, and I've been here since 1946, I love Marcellus, or I wouldn't be here. Anne wouldn't have come back to this town if she didn't love this town. Our fathers worked very, very hard to make this town a good town. I don't think Anne wants to see our town go down any more than I do, because our fathers worked hard, very hard. You have not worked hard.
No. Now, let's, if there are other issues besides my being alive, that may be an objection, and you're entitled to have it, but I think, aside from that, and maybe that's all it is, but aside from that, what are the other issues that grind at you, that outrage you, that irritate you, that have brought you here this evening to voice?
I asked a council member before in which to become a council member again, I really think that you guys should point someone tonight, because otherwise, what happens if someone gets sick? You can't have, the meeting would have to be canceled and rescheduled.
No. If, if you have three.
But-
They, they happen to get sick at the same time, no?
Yeah. If someone gets sick, and someone else gets sick, or someone, God forbid, has a heart attack, or something, or gets in an accident, some, someone else should be pointed tonight. It doesn't mean me pointing. He's awesome. He has been here forever. He was on the fire department with my dad and my mom and stuff. I would rather him be on the council than me. But I also have seen people come onto the council, got what they wanted, and left. Those ones, you don't want on the council. You want the ones that care about this community, and wants the best. Our schools are growing, we need to grow, so we can bring families in here to support our schools.
Very good.
Very good.
I'm sorry. Something needs to be done.
You make a proper point, and you've done it very well.
So-
Jim?
It doesn't make any difference to me if I get on the council or not. One of my main reasons why I like to get, get on the council is to go and help this community out, try and take, put the council back in control of the reins. The council is not in control of this village. The village clerk slash manager is, and you've got to go and get that out of her reins into your reins. There's only one way to do it. Get people up there in them seats, get a full council like Mr. Welborn wants, and you're gonna get things done. I started coming to council meetings here in the last few months, because I'm very disappointed out of pure council members. Things are trying to get done, and it's always comes to a dead end. Nothing is done. If you really think a lot of this community, then do it like you're supposed to. Do it your way. Don't go and vote because somebody wants to vote you this way. Don't go and vote because, yes, because somebody wants this person on a board or that person on a board. Go through your own heart. That's what you gotta do.
And that's what I've been doing. I vote-
I try, I try myself to control, I got 20 different people out there in that fire department right now. And when you get 20 different people, just got 20 different ideas, and you try and put them all together and then come up with one idea, I'm not always right, and I'm not always wrong. The morale up in the fire department right now is great. Everybody gets along. That's the way I want it. That is my main goal.
And you've done a fantastic job.
Plus, I want to get some more good equipment in here for this department, because this department needs to go and protect the people that we're supposed to. Mr. Olson's doing the same thing. One of the best AMs directors this department's ever had, had a long, long time. Between the two of us, we work together. I love this community. I didn't even want to stay in this community when I first got all the service, but my wife, she didn't want to move out the country, and I understood that. You can't take a town girl and put her out in the country and her be satisfied. So we moved to town, or we stayed in town, and I'm glad I did. I love Marcellus. I love the people of this town. I don't agree with all of them. I don't agree with all of them, but I still love this town, love the people. I love the area that we go and protect. And going on thirty-some years on this department. Gotta love somebody. I don't care who it is, just my worst enemy, I'm still gonna go and help them out. If I'm on that council, I'm still gonna go and try and help the people of this community. Because that's what you people were elected to go and do. You were elected to go and take care of these people, and you've got to go and run the village yourself, you gotta take the reins. If you can't take them reins, tell you what, there's a door, bye. That's the way I feel.
Anybody else?
I really do think that we need a full council back to the numbers that it was, because we need people with some fresh ideas, some uplifting ideas. This town is just not going anywhere. Drive down our streets, maybe you have, maybe you haven't, but if you have, shame on all of us for sitting here and doing nothing. Sidewalks are going back to nature, houses look terrible. And it's time, you know, we have a blight man who we've gotten, really, very little accomplished. I think he's here in namesake only, to maybe to appease a few of us who have real concerns. But it's time that the council go back to the full number, where we get some fresh ideas, some uplifting ideas, and put this town back in its glory instead of downhill. And it is downhill, I drive clients around every week. I don't even wanna tell you some of the remarks that I hear. It's time to get this town straightened back to its grand way it was. And it takes a full council, not just two and two, and four and four, or whatever. Takes a manager that takes a real interest in the community as well. And we need to do that, folks. You need to do that.
What is the big, what is the big problem stepping up to the plate tonight and making an appointment?
Just one.
Yeah, just one.
Pardon?
What's the problem tonight with stepping up to the plate and doing your job and making an appointment?
May I answer that?
Yeah, please.
I, I, when I walked in here tonight, I had absolutely no idea that there were any letters of intent. Had I known that, had I, had I been given that information beforehand, my vote would have, might have been different. This is one of the things that I'm having a problem with, is the lack of communications between our president and the rest of the village council. It's got nothing to do with the village manager. It's just like Ron, alright, wait, I wanna say, I have, I wanna say my piece now.
I'm not saying any people, okay, I'm just talking in general.
And I, I am using that, Mr. Welburn went ahead and without, without conferring with the rest of the council, and refused to have John Suratch take minutes while he was in office. Never asked the council for any backing, or any interest, or any comments, or anything. This is the problem that I'm having with him. I don't know about the rest of you, but it's just like, like I said, if I'd known that there were three letters of intent, that's one thing, but I didn't know, didn't know until he just brought it up.
I completely, I completely hear what you're saying, but what, what happened in the past does not represent today. This meeting was called to talk about that seat right there. You know, whether John Suratch, whatever, that's, that's history. That seat needed to get filled, so he brings some letters to the table. Krista could have brought some letters to the table. I mean, I mean, this is a valid point, right?
Mr. Welburn was, there was two letters turned in that he was not aware of.
Sure, and you guys could have brought that to the table tonight and reviewed it.
See, I did, I, I didn't know it.
Well, I'm saying, and reviewed it as a council, and said, okay, yeah, let's...
Was there something wrong in bringing those letters up then?
No, except I would, you know, I just think it would have been, did you know about him?
I didn't know they was, I didn't know they was there either. But I'm saying, it's great.
But where's the problem?
It's great because the general, the general public is here supporting you guys to fill the seat. The general public's saying, let's, let's do this.
All right, when we hire somebody, and I, Dennis and I are on the personnel committee, we interview them, we, they, they, they put an application in, we look at the application, we go over it, we check the references and stuff. Isn't that the same thing that we should do when we have a council member appointment?
No.
Why?
They, they put their, their, uh, background.
But who had to...
We go through the background, we don't have the FBI check them out or anything, or the sheriff's department.
Don't you guys know these people? Don't you guys know this lady right here? And this gentleman back here? Don't you guys know them?
What difference, I mean, that shouldn't make any difference. My thought is, mm, uh...
I mean, you personally should know.
Anne, are you okay?
No, I'm not okay. Um, thank you for listening to me, um...
Is Mike, Mike back? I got some help coming. You gotta, you gotta go up with Jim for a little bit?
Mm-mm, who I think?
Are you sure?
Mm-hmm. Anne, I would feel better if you get checked out, okay?
Well, I'm fine.
She's frustrated.
I'm frustrated, okay?
I just, I have...
Just like a lot of you people are frustrated tonight. And I really sincerely would like to see this village, like Joyce said. Your, her, my, her dad and my dad put this village together with working on the Rotary Committee, and the Fire Department, and the Village Council, and everything else. I don't wanna see it fall apart. And it's very frustrating to sit here and think you're doing something to improve the village, and then find out from everybody else that you're not, and it just, it just bothers me, I'm sorry.
I understand, because look how many years I haven't been on the council, and I still have people coming up to me and asking, why isn't this happening, or why isn't this happening? I'm going, I'm not on the council anymore. You have to go talk to the new council. But sometimes they don't feel comfortable with the age gap, does that make sense? To come and talk to...
They're not old enough?
No.
I'd like some younger bodies on this council to be honest about it.
Oh, I would too.
But it's just that...
And I'd like to just go to seven, I really would. I don't want anybody to think that I don't want us to go to seven. My thought was that we should interview them, not interview them, but have all the letters of interest, and as a council, go over them, and then make the appointment then. And I just can't see what big difference.
Well, I guess my big hangup is that we went for so long with, uh, just the four of us here, then you, you had your, your problem, then Burke come up sick, then all of a sudden we didn't have a council meeting. That, I guess that's why I'm in a hurry to get that seat filled, so we don't have any more, uh, cancelled council meetings. Not that I think anybody's gonna get sick, but I mean, when, when you get, when you, you plan on a council meeting, and, and you get a call up, and, and, uh, we can't get a quorum at a council meeting, that, I mean, that, that just shouldn't happen.
You find that with all of your, the DDA, and, and the Lions Club, and, you know, the school board has had that happen to them too, so it isn't just the village council.
But I, I think that by not getting that, that seat, this seat filled, that we have got control to keep it at a minimum as we can. But if we, we, Lord, how long have we sat with that chair in? And I thought there was extreme patience doing that.
Oh, I don't think, I, I think, Ra, uh, Ron, you as a, as a person would never have, never have done anything to get rid of Mike while he was...
No, I wouldn't.
No, you absolutely would not.
But, we sat here for, and I'm frustrated sitting here for eight months.
Can I ask what your procedure would be if, if we decided to fill that vacancy tonight? Would you ask our opinion of, are you gonna fill just one vacancy tonight, and...
Well, that's all we can do.
Okay, so, you've got...
The process is one whereby any member of the village council may nominate, uh, and more, more than one person may be nominated. Any of the four current members of the council may nominate, and, uh, as I said, more than one may, uh, be nominated. And beyond that, uh, certainly it all takes place in a public, uh, session. And, uh, appointments to the planning commission, for example, those come, uh, from the chair, the meeting, the president, or the pro temp, in case the president is present. And then it's up to the council to accept or reject the appointment. And, uh, I don't recall, um, I only recall one exception, uh, to a president's making an appointment that was not ratified and confirmed at the same meeting. There was one, and that happened some years ago. Um, but that's the only exception. So it's all open, uh, all of us are participants. And it's roll call vote, there's no secret doubt. I, I would note, uh, that there are a lot of things that the village government, uh, is doing. We have adopted a number of worthy ordinances, we have one coming up soon, uh, which greatly revises and improves prior regulations on management and control and abatement of litter. That's going to be in front of the council, I hope, for final adoption at the next meeting. That's been pending, uh, through several years, but it's worthwhile doing. The, uh, DPW has been upgraded. It, uh, now functions with a superintendent, Mr. Hackenberg, who is present this evening. Uh, he has two assistants. And they are doing, uh, from, uh, reports that we receive, excellent work. I'm going to see at least one of the staffers at the DPW tomorrow, because, uh, there are upgrades being made to water meters, so that they function properly in terms of, uh, reporting wirelessly, uh, to a village recorder. And it improves things, it takes less time to collect the information for building purposes. Dennis Irwin, formerly a staff member with the DPW, has made an excellent contribution to the council. Certainly confers with members of the DPW and, uh, with Mrs. Jordan in her role as village manager. There is, uh, a weekly session that Mr. Hackenberg and Mrs. Jordan hold, so that they each know what, uh, the plan is for the following work week.
Mr., Mr. Webb, uh, I'm, you didn't have to explain all that to me, I meant no harm by my statement, as far as you guys don't do anything.
I'm applying to the audience.
I know, I completely understand, you're applying to them, but you're looking at me, I'm okay with that. But I think the task at hand tonight is to fill that seat, so, I'm just saying.
But there are other, there are other areas.
I, I, I...
We worked well with Jared Hall, who has, who has been a longtime auditor of Marcellus. We have made improvements annually on his recommendations. And, uh, the village, from that standpoint, is in very decent shape. There are a broad spectrum of other things that are being dealt with and being taken care of, and services are being rendered. My one principle in serving in government, wherever I've been, has been to provide services to the people. There was a time back earlier in this century when the front office was shut down. There was no clerk, there was no service at the village hall. And that was because of a political range war, um, involving people of the day. I wasn't a participant in that. I became a member of the village council after things got a bit more civilized. But, uh, the point was, it was power and control became more important than rendering service. And we've gotten beyond that.
Let, let somebody else speak.
Can we get back to what we were talking about, pointing someone? What, you were saying, yay? But we have to focus on what is on hand right now, okay?
Cordell?
There's a little law that requires that you have a publication in the paper. That may have been a policy that you've done in the past, but it's not required. And I know not too long ago, you pointed people to DDA, and all of them, before they had the right letters. You didn't require that, you didn't follow that policy. And I don't know why you feel so strongly, I don't think you'll ever find anyone better than Jim to fill that job. I, I, and you, you have the right to point it right tonight, and I think it ought to be done.
I make a motion that we point Jim Thomas to be to fill a vacant, our vacant council seat.
I'm gonna second it. Pardon, I'll second it.
What is the motion? To fill the vacant, vacant council seat for Jim Thomas filling. Jim Thomas to fill the vacant council seat. You have a contrary motion already adopted. And that provides for giving notice and opportunity for people to apply.
Well, if we're gonna go to seven members, then, then we can still use that.
Well, that can occur at the same time. That, that will be under consideration, uh, later, uh, Dr. Oberoi. But, um, the policy has been, and the practice and the custom have been, that we give the entire public the opportunity to apply.
Rocco?
Welburn?
Yes.
Webb?
No.
Simmons?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes. As a matter of parliamentary rule and procedure, we have, uh, unanimous consent to treat the motion just adopted as one also rescinding, uh, the earlier motion about, uh, giving notice and, uh, advertising.
Yes.
Do you all consent?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Say it again, please.
Then the, then the, then the, uh...
We're rescinding the motion to my motion.
Further action, yes, further action, uh, in terms of what you wish can proceed and be in proper parliamentary form.
I lost you.
Pardon?
We're resc, we're totally rescinding the motion that I made about putting it in the paper.
Right, right.
Because legally you say we don't have to do that, correct? Okay. So, now, we've appointed Jim to fill the vacancy.
No, you haven't appointed anyone to fill the vacancy.
We did.
Yes.
Yes, we just did. Did that.
No, no, uh, you nominate, and then you offer the opportunity for others to be nominated.
It's filled.
Is that filled?
It is, no. Members of the village council are elected officials, and when there is a vacancy,
Do you need to remake the motion where he, where he nominates and...
Well, the point would be that, uh, Mr. Oberoi, in fact, made, uh, made a nomination. And, uh, from that standpoint, uh, that's fine. And I would nominate April Don East.
Oh, I understand.
I think the verbiage was...
I'm just simply, I'm just simply trying to have you thread through the rules and policy and practices in the proper way. I'm not being...
So you've made a nomination, and he's made a nomination, so now it's up to the, as council members to vote?
And you may discuss, or, uh, or anyone else may make a nomination.
You're gonna fill another seat?
Kind of like an, uh, an auction, or any other bits, or any other nominations.
I don't understand what you're saying. I just thought I'd ask during the meetings.
Nothing complex.
So, so we go all in favor of Mr. Thomas?
Why don't we just do voice votes? Ron?
After, after you've called for a discussion.
Is there any more discussions? I think we've had quite a few discussions. Is there any more discussions? Okay?
I'm not clear where we are, there's some discussions. We are, you are nominating April. Mr. Welburn is not...
Mr. Welburn is nominating...
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Thomas.
You have a roll call vote and, um, a majority prevails.
Okay.
But there's nothing complicated.
Uh, so for April, Mrs. Easton. Welburn?
No.
Webb?
Yes.
Irwin?
No.
Uh, sorry, Anne, I missed you.
Oh, no.
Then do we need to vote?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, you need to have a yes as opposed to no.
Welburn?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas. I'm very nervous. Yeah.